She didn't bring the water, so.
Oh.
You guys raised a lot of money for?
Michelle.
That one?
I think we'll raise for sure.
We are eventually, but Cheryl will be back.
Hi, John. How you doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Remember some other city?
Yes.
You did get that?
We did, and so the council's got it in the record.
He's very active.
Well, he's not sure.
States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moved your finger.
Thank you very much.
It migrated to the other quarters.
Oh, did it?
Yeah.
It's not right.
I was thinking that people watching on TV are going, "My TV's backwards."
Okay, roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, thank you. Then, we're gonna adopt the agenda, but first, after we do that, I wanted the city attorney just to report out from the closed session. So, as many of you already know, Anna Lou Martin, a longtime Brisbane resident, passed away, and so we'd like, I'd like to suggest that we adjourn the meeting in her memory. Any other changes to the agenda? Let's see, there was this suggestion, and we move, or we change the order on our new business of A and B.
I did have one other thing if we could add on that.
Okay.
Les Cooper, our manager's husband, passed away also.
Oh, okay.
This morning. And that's why Betsy's not here today, I think. So, I'd like to-
So, we should definitely recognize that, too.
Yeah, yeah.
No idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's just sitting in the back quietly.
Mm-hmm. It's gonna cut our attendance 50 percent.
Yeah, so if we can add him to the list also.
All right, for sure. And then, it's been suggested that we shift the order in new business. Do B first before A. Do the survey before the-
Okay.
Calling for the municipal action, if that's okay with everybody? All right, any other changes?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the city attorney, wanna give a quick report from the closed session?
There was a closed session this evening, a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Watkins versus City of Brisbane, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. Direction was given, no action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then we move to oral communications, and I know, I just wanted to recognize that Anna Lou Martin's son, Jim Martin, is here. I know that Michelle wanted to say something as well, and maybe Jim will join in in reference to the passing of Anna Lou Martin.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I just really want to acknowledge the contribution that Anna Lou Martin made to the City of Brisbane, year in and year out during her time here. And she was a shaker and a mover and a powerful person who really helped to shape this town. And we should all honor her memory. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. Jim?
I'd like to thank you for acknowledging my mother. And for those of you who knew her back in the day, I thought I'd let you know, I got a phone call a week ago Friday saying her death was imminent and within hours. Then came Saturday, then came Sunday, then came Monday. Mom lasted 10 days because she apparently somehow realized somebody had told her she had to die on Friday.
Mm-hmm.
So, she made it through 10 days and died peacefully. She had Alzheimer's. There was nothing left of her, essentially. She had pretty much died about three years ago. But fortunately, her long journey is over, and yeah, thank you for acknowledging what she did when she was here at Brisbane.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, I just wanted to add my thanks to Anna Lou. I remember in the 1980s, there was a trio of women that nothing happened in this town without them. That was Anna Lou Martin, Marion Vickery, and Lorraine Harris. And they were a team. At every community event, you can imagine, they were there. And they were active in community events and social events and politics. They were everywhere. And so they were really, in many respects, kind of the active soul of the community during that period. So I was fortunate enough to work closely with Anna Lou, and we had a very positive, productive relationship. And so, in fact, one of the reasons that I ended up on the council was Anna Lou. So, I have to give her a lot of credit for starting me in a whole different career. So, she was quite an important person, you know, for me, anyway, and definitely for the community. First time I ran for election in 1993, it's 20 years ago now. The first persons I went to see was your mom, Jim. I had to pass muster with her before I could anybody else. If I can't make it through her, then forget it. Yeah, that's for sure.
Okay, so, you lived a long life, born in September 26, 1990.
Nice.
Okay, on to other matters. I have a couple of slips here. Dana?
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, I think it was the Wednesday after our last BB CAG meeting, the Department of Toxic Substance Control posted some letters. And one of them was a request from Universal Paragon to take some rock that's currently at, being crushed on the Northeast Ridge, and to move it to the Schlaglock site. It was tested, and it tests to be beyond residential quality, residential contaminant level, quality.
The arsenic?
Yes, I'm sorry. Some of us already know, I'm sorry, containing arsenic. It's considered that the arsenic is naturally occurring, but rather than, it's, in my opinion, given that I haven't gotten any feedback from anybody, rather than it sending some warning flags up saying, "Well, wait a minute. If we have non-residential quality dust being created in our residential community, shouldn't we do something about it?" I contacted the DTSC and made information available to the mayor, and at this point, I don't, I haven't gotten any response, and I would like to know if anything is up. What concerns me, and this is what I've been watching for 20-something years on the BB CAG, is that the DTSC, or whomever is in charge, will declare that they'll clean something up. And then here's a real backhanded thing where they're saying, "Oh, by the way, can we import contaminated soil onto the site?" And it's still for residential. And so, I'm really concerned. I'm really concerned that all the power is given to DTSC, and this is just something that got conveyed in a correspondence, and maybe you knew about it, maybe you didn't. If you were aware about it, I would like to know, and the public has the right to know, what is going on about? I mean, I would've thought you would've covered up the heap of crushed rock on the Northeast Ridge the moment you realized that that wasn't safe for the public. So, I just would like to know. You know, maybe I'm having an alarmist moment, but I really don't understand why transporting arsenic-laden soils would be considered no impact and no difference from the draft EIR or the EIRs that have been used, both for the Northeast Ridge project and for the Schlag project. I know they were not talking about importing any contaminated soils into the Schlaglock project, but now they are, and they say, "Oh, well, it's no different. It's background level." So, I'm just curious to know why. I'm the only person in town that's alarmed over the fact that there's an agreement to transport toxic soils of which, you know, seem to just be a little checkmark on a list. Okay, go ahead, move your soils anywhere you want to. Anyway, that's my query.
Okay, no, the appropriate query, and when I got your email, I was out of town when I got your email, but I did forward it to the staff. And I know there has been some further investigation, and so could we bring us up to date on that?
Yes. When we received the information that came through Dana to the council members, we have contacted our consultant on the Northeast Ridge project, who has gotten back to us with a kind of an initial assessment. And, you know, the staff, I wanted to get together with the staff and the city attorney with regards to that and whether or not that's been adequately handled in terms of the EIR and the addendum. As you probably recall, the Northeast Ridge property owner, Toll Brothers, did an addendum to deal with their rock up there. So, what I'd like to be able to do is report back at the August 19 meeting. I don't know if the Public Works Director wants to add anything to that. I know he and I have not had a chance to talk today, and some information came in today, so.
Sure, yes, sir, let me take two shots at it. So, just, and I think, I'm sure it's very clear to Dana, but just for other people listening, there's two different projects going on. The one is the Schlaglock, which is out in the city of County of San Francisco, and it's being overseen from a regulatory perspective by Department of Toxic Substances Control. And then the project where the dirt or the rock that is being made into smaller rock is coming from is from the Northeast Ridge. That's the project that Toll Brothers is finishing. It's the final phase of the Northeast Ridge development. The information that I received from our consultant today, and unfortunately, she was out of town in the Sierras for a week without access to email, was that the level of arsenic was examined, as were other air quality issues, examined in 1983 EIR. And it was her initial opinion, without having only been back a day, that the conditions of approval and the mitigations were in place for dust control would be appropriate for arsenic. And the reason for that is the, apparently arsenic, the primary way you get arsenic into your system is ingesting it. So, it's not breathing it, it's ingesting it. And the primary way that people who have become, unless you're in the old play, arsenic and old lace, and it's poured into your tea, the primary way that you get it is people who are working in industrial facilities, so smelters and areas like that where a lot of it was being used. Very common to what happened within, you know, a lot of the industries within the United States, where workers were working next to materials, and they didn't have appropriate respiratory gear and such. But in closing, the position was that the management of the dust control, which is happening out there and has been happening ever since the crushing of that operation has occurred, is expected to be adequate to maintain the safety of our public.
Yeah, I guess the further question is, and that deals with the Northeast Ridge, but the further question is, you know, this material is being deposited someplace else. And what are the implications of that? I guess is something you're gonna further investigate.
Yeah, I think that's, well, jumping, I mean, I think that's part of what we want to sit down with the city attorney and talk through that in terms of, I mean, I think Dana did hit the nail on the head in terms of who's in charge of what here.
Right.
And so that always makes it a little bit difficult. But I think you want to have an opportunity with the facts to sit down with the city attorney and come back to you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is this something also maybe the Bay Area Air Quality Management District should look at? And maybe Randy, a fair note to you.
I think I'd like to delve a little deeper into what exactly was examined in the 1983 EIR before we asked a regulator to go back and take a second or third look at something.
Okay.
Through the mayor?
Sure.
It's my understanding in the conversations that I've had with Clay that while the rock's being crushed on site now, it's not being transported yet. Is that correct?
If I may, it actually started being transported last Friday, ma'am.
Okay, so.
So, today was day two of its transport.
So, my prior conversation with our city manager was that it hadn't started being transported yet. And it seems difficult that we knew about an issue and started letting it be transported before we really have any answer for it. So, I was hoping that would be somewhat of a relief to the citizens who have concerns about it. But I guess that is not the case. So, we're gonna be looking at this after the fact.
Again, I mean, the problem is, is that we really have no authority that's stopped them at this point of moving it to the site where they're bringing the crushed rock. I mean, that, the rock has to be moved off of the site. I understand your concern about where the rock ultimately ends up, and that's something we'll sit and talk with the city attorney about. It is going, as I understand it right now, Randy can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's going to Brisbane soils processing out on the Baylands at the moment.
They're actually using it for cover fill at the Schlaglock project.
Okay.
It's going directly, though? Because I was, maybe I was mistaken, but I thought it was going as an intermediary site to the soils processing out on our Baylands.
I believe, well, there are pieces of correctness in what all three of us are saying, ma'am. So, it's my understanding that some of the rock is going directly to the site, and some of the rock is going to Bayland Soil Processing for further processing. And then, the intent of the great majority of it, as much as they can take, is to be used as cover, as a final remediation cap over the Schlaglock site. So, that's why the DTSC is involved? Because they're approving its import to that site, which is the site that they have regulatory control over?
Okay, this, okay. Well, I don't think I have enough information to say that that's a good plan or not. I'm just confused why we would, why we're taking this particular rock and that when they didn't even know this rock was going to exist during this initial phase of the project, it wasn't until they ended up with too much rock that they even knew they would have this rock, that they've already found a repository on another site. It seems a little odd to me that that would happen.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
So, Randy, in regards to the arsenic, so arsenic is found in the rock on San Bruno Mountain. You know, if the mitigation measures weren't in place for the Northeast Ridge, and they're crushing that rock, I'm just trying to understand, you know, what the significance of the amount of arsenic that would be in there, and how dangerous that would be if the mitigation measures weren't in place in regards just to arsenic? And I'm putting you on the spot, I mean, I know you are.
Sure, and I won't try and give you a complete answer, sir, because I don't have the complete facts, but it's certainly, you know, one of the remarks that people like to make, and we say this all the time, is that, "Well, it occurs in nature." Now, that doesn't mean that it's not harmful, right? I mean, rattlesnake poison occurs in nature. I don't want any of that. So, but arsenic is a naturally occurring element. It does appear, it's very common in the rock in San Bruno Mountain, just as throughout the San Franciscan bedrock that we have in the Bay Area. We have naturally formed asbestos that's in there. These are all things that, if we are aware of, we attempt to put best mitigation practices into place to make sure particularly that the type of exposure method that can harm someone, that in certain doses could be harmful to someone, is prevented. Usually, with something like asbestos, we're usually a bit more concerned about the airborne because the path that asbestos takes is airborne and then ingested into your lungs. That's where it causes problems. The difference with the arsenic is the path that it takes when it becomes a problem is when it's ingested. So, when it's eaten, it goes into your digestive tract, I'm having trouble digesting that word, and then gets into your system. So, is there a possibility that at some point in time, there would be enough, if not for the dust control, there would be enough dust going up, it's got enough arsenic that it could land somewhere, that someone could accidentally somehow ingest that? I suppose someone could draw that pathway there.
Mm-hmm.
But I think, and the best information I have from the initial review, is that simply by controlling the dust and by watering that rock down as it's being crushed, that that will keep it on the rock. It will stop it from migrating off of that construction site, and it gets into the trucks, and it gets transported to a site where DTSC has approved rock with this amount of background arsenic in it for the use that they're intending it for.
Sure, yeah, I just don't want people that are currently living on the ridge to be concerned that, okay, now in my hair, that I, you know, next to my houses.
Right, no, I appreciate you letting me give a more detailed response, sir. Thank you for asking.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and I think the other concern would be, you're talking about ingesting, but if they're gonna use it for cover in an area that's gonna be used for residences, little kids do tend to ingest soil. And so, I guess the question is, we would need, or certainly, I would think people would need to be assured that the amount that they could ingest would be much smaller than that which would harm them, but I think that is the question. You know, is that a valid concern or not?
I think that's a very valid concern, sir. And I think part of the confusion that we had as to when that rock was gonna be moved or not was because someone in the Vis Valley neighborhood asked that very question. The flyers that DTSC had put out that Dana brought to everyone's attention had gone out in Vis Valley, and I was told that one person made an inquiry to DTSC and said, "Hey, I live near there. What does that really mean? What does that happen?" And so what I was told, third-hand, was that DTSC said, "No, let's stop that import now until we answer this person." And apparently, they had a conversation with that person. I don't know if that person was completely satisfied, but apparently DTSC was satisfied enough that they permitted the rock to be transported to the site.
Okay, and so we'll get a further update on that the next meeting?
Somebody else had a question.
Same issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Dana, you're definitely not the only person in Brisbane who cares about this. I definitely care about this, and I saw that you were taking the lead on it. But now I'm even more concerned about it because there's a fine line between breathing and ingesting into your lungs versus ingesting into your stomach. And there has been very poor dust control over the last several months in all of our dangerous sites, including the soils processing plant and the quarry and up there on the Northeast Ridge. And it's nice to say that you're watering it down, but then where the hell's the water going that now has arsenic dust on it, in it? And by the 19th of August, the stuff will already be moved. And so what action could you take then? And you say that we have no regulatory action over it, but we've gotta have some action over all of our different grading permits and all of our different soils moving permits, or are we just gonna roll over and let them do whatever they want, regardless of the poisons involved? And so I'm concerned, and maybe I'm one of those people who's drawing that path, but you know, a lot of research over the years has shown that the paths we drew in the past weren't good enough. You know, I mean, my God, they passed out cigarettes to soldiers in World War II and got people like my dad addicted to smoking. You know, if we knew that then, would we still have done it? Does that say that we should not take concern over the amount of lead and arsenic and other dangerous chemicals that we're releasing into the hemisphere? Does this mean the water that you're using to water it down with then goes down into the drain and then goes all the way out to the bay and is now poisoning the fish with we-don't-know-what levels of arsenic that we then turn around and eat? Where does it stop? Where does it stop? I read this thing this week about the bees being killed off by fungicides. That's what's really killing the bees. Doesn't seem to hurt the plants, but then it hurts the bees. And so where does it stop? And I'm saying it should stop right here. And also, I want us to test the dust coming out of the quarry now for arsenic. Because if it turns out that that's native in the rock on San Bruno Mountain, then what the hell are we doing digging it up and grinding it up and blowing dust everywhere? So, I read the entire EIR for the Northeast Ridge that was written in 1983, and I don't remember them addressing arsenic. Now, I don't have perfect memory, and I don't remember every last damn word I read, but I read the document pretty thoroughly, just like I'm reading the current document pretty thoroughly. And I really think that we should take action to stop this until we know what they're doing. Because the other thing that came up in that meeting for the BB CAG that kind of set off an alarm was that they're not gonna be moving dirt around that has lead in it, that they know has lead in it. And they're gonna be moving it around in Brisbane and at the Schlaglock, Schlaglock site. Now, where's that lead-laden dust gonna go? And you think that it just is gonna blow out across the bay or wherever? But you know, I drive down the Bay Shore Freeway every day, and I have said, stood here and said, "The dust was so thick I could taste it," which means I am ingesting it, and many other people are ingesting it. So where does this insanity stop? I mean, yes, we're just a little tiny town with all these pressures. But you know, if the buck doesn't stop here, where is it gonna stop? And I'm looking at four people who I know care at a higher level than the average citizen. And I really expect you to take action to stop this until we have a better idea of what we're dealing with and what the levels are. And I don't care what DTSC's authority is. They're not the ones living here, breathing it, tasting it, and dealing with it down the road. And we're just moving the problem from one site to another site. And you're worried about the little kids digging in the dirt? Well, they're gonna cover the entire frickin' thing with concrete. Because I asked about it, about the lead. And they go, "We're gonna cover the whole thing with concrete. There's not gonna be any dirt." Imagine that, no dirt at all for water to soak through or for little kids to dig in. It's really scary what they're gonna do out there. And I think that we need to stop this insanity, moving arsenic-ridden gravel from one site to another site. And I do want us to take action to have the quarry tested because God only knows what they're gonna do there next. There's certainly been a different level of activity that I've seen. I was concerned because I drove over Guadalupe the other day, which I've been avoiding doing because I can't stand to see the Northeast Ridge site. And they're doing something else up there than what they've been doing, and I'd like to know what it is, and I'd like the dirt up there tested, too, before it goes airborne. So, thank you.
Well, I guess a question for the city attorney. Would we have the authority to stop until it was tested and we got back positive stuff?
it was tested and we got back positive stuff?
Councilmember Conway, I'd have to have probably a further conversation with staff, with the director of public works and the city manager, and determine what permits we have and what control we do have over removal of the material. I couldn't answer that right now, but I'm sure we'll be discussing it very shortly.
Well, it just seems that, you know, this could snowball a bit, and we'd really want to know for sure about the safety, you know, you bring up about kids ingesting it, and it sounds like we don't know, you know, I mean, we don't really have the answers either. So maybe staff's going to meet when, tomorrow, Wednesday, maybe we can see if we do have the authority to be able to go ahead and put things on hold for a little bit, until all this testing's done, or, you know, maybe find out more facts of what exactly is the situation.
If I, Mr. Mayor, you know, Randy, did we, you talked about the person that made the inquiry to DTSC, and DTSC stopped, evaluated, did they present any information for why they wanted to continue?
So the one letter that was on file, and this was an attachment to the documents that Dana had provided to us, is from Chip Gribble, who is a project manager over at DTSC, and this is the statement he makes, and the subject line of the email is, "Request to Review Import Soil Reports." Says, "DTSC has reviewed the request to import soil from the Guadalupe Canyon location in Brisbane for use at the UPC OU site, San Francisco, California. Based on the information provided, the soil proposed for imported borrow material for the UPC OU site does not appear to pose any additional contaminant risk that would need to be integrated into existing site-specific contaminant risk values. The history and data provided indicate that use of this native material for the UPC OU site in San Francisco would not present any new site-specific risk considerations."
And so you mean, we talk about the data, and we've, of course, in all the development, or a lot of the development in this area, we've used the rock, you know, I mean, San Francisco used to have a lot of hills, and now, you know, less hills. But that doesn't mean, like you're saying, you know, Michelle, or, you know, things that maybe you didn't know about in the past, because you did them in the past, that makes it okay for the future. It would be nice, I think, to get some kind of understanding of how many particles per whatever...
PPF.
Yeah, you know, of arsenic. And, you know, arsenic is one of those, one of those products that does strike fear in people, you know, because it's had that history of being a poison, and so, but...
Used for nefarious...
Yeah, right, but you know, if you, if you understand the science behind it, you know, if we get the data and says, okay, yeah, well, yeah, there is arsenic, but it's so small that it doesn't have serious negative effects on humans or animals, then, okay. But I don't think we have that information now, and it would be nice to get it.
Arsenic is definitely a naturally occurring substance. It occurs in apple seeds. They are now reevaluating the amount of arsenic that is in apple juice because of the potential effects on children who drink a lot of apple juice. And arsenic is a chemical that is retained in the body, the same as lead is, which is why it is so potentially dangerous. It does not just move through your system and go out, it stays in the body, it's a heavy metal.
It is a heavy metal.
And current safety parts per million may not be reflecting what most current research is reflecting on the dangers of arsenic poisoning and lead poisoning.
Mr. Mayor, one quick comment.
Sure.
Last week, when this information was provided to me from Dana, and I forwarded it on to City, and I felt somewhat reassured that the transportation hadn't started yet. I had initially been concerned when there was rock that wasn't used on site like it was supposed to be, and they ended up with extra rock, which, how they knew, how they didn't know about that when they had planned for this development, I was questioning how they ended up with all this extra rock. And so we do have some control over that rock when it's there, and we issued a permit and evidently some changes to the current building plan and grading plan to allow for exportation of this extra rock. And that was a bit concerning, but to find out that it's contaminated rock and that the transportation has already started, when I felt a little reassured that we were going to find out what the implications were before we allowed that. So I would like to hear from staff when they can get an answer in the next day or two to, it's not even so much where it's going, and I thought it was going to a temporary storage facility here in our own town before its final disposition. And now we know where that's going, and it's very concerning to know that it's already started before we got real answers on it.
We've used a lot of the rock from the ridge for the fill, haven't we? I mean, isn't like, I mean, a lot of the Northeast Ridge, those homes out there, a lot of the base has come from San Bruno Mountain?
That's a correct statement, sir. There's been an extensive crushing operation that's going on in this phase, and prior to that, in the earlier phases, there were extensive crushing operations, there were blasting operations, I'm told, before I appeared here, so, yes.
So is this the first time the rock's been positive for arsenic, or is this just because it's going to a specific site that it was even tested?
I can't answer what happened in those previous operations before I got here, ma'am.
Well, this is a little bit of a dilemma, because obviously, we're very concerned, citizens are concerned, but we have a process that's already underway, and regulatory authorities have sort of weighed in to a certain extent, anyway. And, of course, this is a new item, it's not on the agenda, so, got the legal issue But maybe, I think the council can express to the staff that, you know, we have a concern that there's some uncertainty here about what all is going on, and if the staff could come up with some kind of reason for serious concern, then maybe we might use whatever regulatory authority we have to hold things off for a while, just as a thought of, you know, looking at the situation. You know, if there's some kind of serious concern, but if we don't come up with a serious concern, I don't know, you know, what more we can do under the circumstances. I'm a little bit in a dilemma, because there's a serious concern being expressed, but I'm not quite sure what the heck to do about it.
I share your sentiment, it's, and I know it's frustrating to the public and frustrating to the council when there's these cross-jurisdictional authorities, but that's the reality of what we're dealing with right now. We could certainly approach Toll Brothers and see if they could, would be willing not to move it off-site for a period of time while we try to work our way through this. Like I said, we knew I had to sit down with the city attorney. We are dealing with a regulatory agency that has approved this, and that's, you know, that's kind of the bottom line, whether, and I know that's probably not satisfactory to anybody, and I understand that, but I'm not sure, you know, that becomes a real difficult issue to work our way through. But we, you know, I mean, I'm not sure how Toll Brothers would react to a request to, you know, cease from moving it off-site, but we could approach them on the short run and see if they'd be willing to do that.
Perhaps...
Try, what do you think?
I think that would be nice to approach them, but when we granted their grading permit, or their change in their permit to remove the extra rock, is, was there any provision for removing arsenic-laded rock? Is that a way to...
Well, I think that's one of the questions that we're trying to get our hands around. And that is one of the reasons that, although we got a report back today, I wasn't completely comfortable, because that issue itself has not been really tied down. So that's one point we need to tie down, and that could potentially be the hook to say, well, you can't move it off-site, because that hasn't been looked at at this point. So we'll look at it from that angle. With regards to the permit that was granted for them to crush the rock and move it off-site, our primary interest in all that is how they get it off-site, the roadways, you know, we were very clear with them that we did not want them to transport that into the Guadalupe Quarry, because that was going to be coming right through town. So we remanded them a permit, but told them they had to go basically out from the site to, they didn't have to go to Brisbane Soils Processing, but that was obviously the other closest site. So this thing that came in kind of, you know, in the last hour about, you know, we're going to move it directly to the Schleglock site, was something that had not been discussed with staff prior, but as long as they're going in the truck routes that they're supposed to go, that, you know, that wasn't, you know, the primary, or wasn't the concern that we had. So we'll contact them, we do want to look at this issue with regards to whether arsenic was covered in the previous EIRs, and then we can report back to you. But I do, I think, just want to emphasize what the mayor has said in terms of kind of the difficulty that we have in this, and the, I don't want to create any false expectations.
Yeah, because, I mean, we've allowed them to move it off-site, but we didn't say places that they couldn't move it off-site, except for the quarry.
Well, and we didn't, but we didn't also, we were assuming it was plain rock.
Well, but we don't know for sure that it is contaminated to a level that would be dangerous, and that's something that we're going to find out.
Yes, no, I agree, I agree.
I mean, in fact, I mean, DTSC has said that it isn't, so, I mean, that's the problem we've got.
Yeah, we just need to get that data, and, you know, I think that'd be really helpful.
Yeah.
I mean, we certainly want to hear from them more directly about this, but I mean, as Randy has read to you, I mean, they did approve it.
Yes.
Staff understands the heightened concern of the citizenry and now of the council, so, you know, I'm sure you can be creative without having high expectations.
Well, we're willing to take the challenge to be creative, but, you know, there are laws we have to work with too, so...
Yeah, I know, I know, I understand that, so...
Well, it cuts the cost of transporting it tremendously for the builder if they can take it from one site directly to a secondary site who is, you know, willing to accept it or willing to pay for it one way or another, without having to haul it twice. It cuts down on the cost tremendously for the builder who needs to dispose of this rock. So one would hope that if we ask them to hold off for a day or two while we got additional information, that in the consideration of being a good neighbor, that they would hopefully respect that request from the city.
Okay. I have some other oral communication requests. Michelle has down for one or two other items as well, right? Want to pursue them?
I'll be quick, I'm Michelle Sam, Brisbane resident, I have three things. One is, San Bruno Mountain Watch wrote a letter today to Brisbane City Council and staff members, encouraging us to work with Daly City and South San Francisco, and ABAG and Reedit, to make the entire San Bruno Mountain area part of a priority conservation area. And I just urge you all to read it, work with staff to help expedite that, and I'll leave it at that, because I know Stuart has it well in hand and other people do.
I think we have that agenda is for the 19th of August.
Okay. And then the next thing is the issue about the draft EIR, and the Open Space and Ecology Committee has sent the city council a memo asking to extend the review period for the draft environmental EIR until January 31st, 2014. We have diligently begun our work on the draft EIR. It is an extremely intense document that in some areas are already found lacking. And so we are reviewing it with a fine-tooth comb, because the draft EIR and the EIR sets the framework for everything downstream from this. And any subsequent project EIRs, or any subsequent environmental reviews, for anything else that we do out there, will all come under the umbrella of this draft, of this EIR. And as you can see from what happened on the Northeast Ridge and other situations, that it is critical and crucial that we do our homework to the very highest level of our ability at this stage, at this early stage. We have waited years for this document, and I know that 120 days is longer than normal for a draft EIR, but this is a longer-than-normal timeline, a longer-than-normal project, and it is an extremely complex one. And therefore, I find that, and we all agreed on the Open Space and Ecology Committee, that 120 days is also not enough. We have scheduled a meeting for every single week.
We read the letter, and it is on the agenda, so...
Okay, this is on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
A little bit later under staff report, isn't it?
There's a staff report.
There's a staff report, but this wasn't actually on the agenda, because I read this.
Not specifically to extend, but we've had other requests, and I think what we'll probably do is also agenda that for the 19th of August.
All right, but one of the concerns I have is that waiting too long to agenda this, or to make the decision to extend the comment period, puts undue burden now to rush through it in case you don't decide you're not going to extend it, and that's the pressure that we feel right now. And then we're not as careful in reading it and giving up the information and going through it as thoroughly as possible. So that's of grave concern for us, and I find myself a little bit stressed about it, you know?
We can talk about that later when we come to it.
And then the third item I want to talk about is trash, garbage and trash. And I got, I've been noticing a lot that there's a lot of garbage and trash everywhere. And I got a letter from a windsurfer who talked about the amount of trash in the bay, and I forwarded that to Recology, and my concerns about the amount of trash, because I drive on BD and I land to get on the freeway every morning, and it's a despicable mess. And Recology has already taken action to start cleaning up garbage on their property, around their property. And they're not the creators of all the garbage, it comes from the freeway, it comes from inconsiderate people who litter, it blows from everywhere. But then I really started noticing how much trash there is in Brisbane, and around our own, you know, like on Bay Shore Boulevard, and even on the streets of Brisbane. And I would like the council to take action about really having an anti-trash movement and cleaning everything up. It looks just awful. There's plastic bags stuck everywhere, I'm really glad we passed the bag ordinance, there's paper, there's crap, there's just trash everywhere, festooning the bushes. And so I don't know what kind of action we can take, other than to continue to put pressure on our neighbors to the north, meaning San Francisco, to clean... on our neighbors to the north, meaning San Francisco, to clean up, you know, that area, the people who have permits there to do work, to clean up their areas, to clean up Tunnel Road, and to continue to pressure Recology to help clean up their area and above and beyond their area, which they seem willing to do. But also for us to clean up Brisbane and Bay Shore Boulevard and all the trash that's stuck to fences and everywhere else. We don't have John Quilter anymore.
Yeah.
And so I really want the city to take a proactive approach.
You don't have to say it shows.
It really does show. And we need to take a proactive approach, teach the school kids, "Don't litter," teach, you know, "People don't litter," find people for littering, and pick up the goddamn litter, you know? I mean, it's really ugly. And we have a reputation as being a garbage dump, not just from us having a garbage dump, but from how we're kind of presenting ourselves now with the amount of trash. I'm really appalled at how dirty it is.
Okay, thank you.
I just got a quick question for you.
Sure.
Randy, do we have any "Don't litter" signs on Bay Shore? Do you know of?
I don't think we do. I think we have signs indicating who's picking it up, but we don't have any signs that say you can't litter.
Yeah. Typically, how much does, you know, a sign, like a "Don't litter" sign, and then installing it, how much typically does sound like that cost?
A sign's 20 or 30 bucks. It's really the cost to get a crew out there to set it. So it might be a couple hundred, but if you're going to hire labor to do it.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right.
Okay, Karen Cunningham.
Karen Cunningham, Brisbane resident. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I just want to give you a really quick update on our cats' spay-neuter day, that I was part of the volunteer crew for that. First of all, thanks for allowing us to do that. The Humane Society, SPCA, brought in their van with Dr. Curry and two vet techs, and they parked on San Francisco Street under the trees, right by the bathroom area. And from 9:00 in the morning until 4:30 in the afternoon, the Humane Society staff worked diligently to spay-neuter 20 cats in Brisbane. Eight of those cats were actual ferals that were really quite wild cats, and I must say we did have one resident, one person, who actually trapped all eight of those cats. The other 12 were stray cats that were from various places in town, but mainly from Visitation Avenue. So that was a supreme effort. I would say it was 100% success. It was an amazing event from my perspective as a person who's out there in the trenches now, trapping cats and having them spayed and neutered and returned where possible, that there were no complaints from anybody, to my knowledge. The people who came down to volunteer were superb. It was really amazing that there were people in town who actually volunteered their entire day to come down and hang out. Basically, what we did was that spay-neuter van...did you see the photos and the links to everything that I sent to the city?
I have not seen it yet.
Okay, I'll make them available again. Hi, did you not get that? I thought I sent it. Okay, I'll resend it. So there were a lot of photographs taken that showed, you know, this wasn't just a, you know, "Let's operate on animals in the back of a truck." This is a multi-million dollar van that was actually donated by a family in San Francisco for the purposes of going into communities and providing this service for free. And there's a full and operating theater in the back of this van. There are eight holding cages within the van, so the cats come out of surgery, they're going like a normal post-op situation. And the reason they asked to be under the trees on a flat space was because the post-op area where the cats come into recovery is actually on a topol and underneath the trees where the volunteers are checking on these animals every 10 minutes for the entire day. So that being said, the population of 20 cats that we stopped reproducing meant that within one year, we have actually cut down the population of stray and feral cats in Brisbane from this one spay-neuter day by 200 cats. That's the number it extrapolates out to. We've located another 30 cats that are in the same position. I did reach out to the community, to, you know, people on the residents of Brisbane Facebook page, and say, "The rest of us are going to pay to have these cats spay-neutered because it's not going to be for free." And people have been reaching into their pocket, it's very cool, and saying, you know, "Here's 20 bucks, here's 30 bucks, let's help do this." So I just wanted to say thanks for letting it happen. I know that the Humane Society will allow this van to come back in again if we allow it, and I hope that you will do that. And a huge round of applause to Rose Kitty Rescue and the Nine Lives Foundation for everything that they put into this event. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Aral Communications? See no other hands or slips. We'll move on, next item on the agenda, which is Consent Calendar. And I'm sure that Terry and I would like to remove item B, and I think the city manager might want to remove item E because there's a change, right? Okay, so that leaves A, C, and D. Move approval. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Terry, do you want to...you know what I noticed?
Well, on the Tuesday, May 28 minutes, it says I was missing and I was here.
Right, yeah.
So that is...
An error that needs to be corrected.
An error.
Yeah. I noticed that right away. Up above, it says you're absent, and the next thing you know, you're second again most.
Yes.
So that was a pretty amazing feat, yeah.
It was.
Yeah. Okay, you want to move approval of those minutes with that change?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Clay, you want to deal with the change in E, or Maria's going to do it directly?
Just get the staff report in there.
Okay.
I thought I would go over the whole staff report, or would you like me to just go over the change that was...
My sense is that just unless people have questions, that the only concern is the thing that's been changed. Am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
So basically, in the agenda report that you have, there was one classification, which was the Senior Management Analyst, where the education level, I noticed after it was posted, was not consistent with the other classifications that are close to it. The Administrative Management Analyst, which is a lower position, actually had a higher education level requirement in it, so the correction was to update, excuse me, the Senior Management Analyst, to incorporate the higher education requirements, to make it consistent. That's basically what the change was necessary. I apologize for not getting that earlier and catching that earlier.
And that's the resolution that we have here.
Correct.
Corrected 201332. So any other questions on this? So can we pass this just by doing item E, or do we have to go resolution by resolution? City Attorney. There's a whole bunch of individual resolutions for each position. Can we do just item E?
Yeah. I think these are all resolutions to approve the new classifications. So a motion to approve all the classifications that are part of exhibit E would be fine without having to do each one individually.
Okay. And that would incorporate the change in the Resolution 32. Okay. Motion to approve item E. Okay. Is there a second?
As amended.
As amended. Yeah, right. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 No.
No?
Nope.
No? Okay. So we have one, two, three, two, one. Did you want to articulate a reason or let it go?
In the consideration of time, I'm going to let it go. I have concerns about our ever-escalating employee costs, and I will leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Maria. So, old business. I believe that has to do with the fire station.
Fire station, yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir, indeed. Honorable mayor, members of town, council members, good evening again. So you will recall that when we brought the FY 1314 budget to you, along with the Capital Improvement Plan, that council approved a $200,000 budget to do what I'm classifying as an interim repair on the roof. And the reason we...I keep using that term very clearly is that several years prior to that, we had gone off and looked at doing a permanent repair to the roof. And the distinction I'm drawing is that this repair is a remove and replace of the existing materials, similar to a patch job, although it really is more than that because we are replacing many of the flashing pieces that are leaking, we are replacing many of the scuppers, those are the vents that are up on top that are in the drain area, or the downspouts that are being replaced. But the other project was really to raise the whole roof. That's what we had looked at. So in the interim, as a matter of cost and a number of other factors, we had looked at a different way of doing it, and that's how we came up with the $200,000 project that was submitted to you back in June. After that, we were asked to go back and get a better understanding of the extent of the mold within the building, because that was an item we didn't have a good handle on at the time. And the original cost proposal that I gave into council assumed that the whole building had some level of mold in it and that it was going to need to be mitigated. So during council's recess last month, we had the Environmental Air Quality Inspector over to the building, who had done the initial mold investigation, excuse me, and we then cut 31 holes throughout the building at the lower level of the drywall, so that he had extensive points of data to gather, and he could get a good understanding of where, in his opinion, based on that testing, without having taken every piece of sheet rock and drywall and plyboard off of the building where we believe the mold is. And we found that, we believe that right now it's restricted to the southern wall of the Apparatus Bay. So if you're looking at the firehouse from the front of it, the wall to the right, which makes sense, that's the really...we have had leaks in other places in the building, but really the biggest ones were in that office just in front of that. That's where this started well over a decade ago. The big leaks started where we had the waterfall features, I think, that the former chief referred to in his office. So that makes good sense to us. So what we have done in this staff report is come to you and said, "We think, based on that information," and we've gone out and gotten some quotes on it, some budgetary numbers, "it's going to take this amount of money to have a remediation contractor come in there and rip all the rock and all the plyboard off and remediate the mold. It's going to take X amount more money to put all new plyboard and drywall back. It's going to take X amount of money to completely clean the HVAC system so that we can be sure that there wasn't any mold that's migrated up into there and that's then blown around once firefighters reoccupy it." And the total number of all of those things, including the additional air quality testing for confirmation to make sure the mold levels really have dropped, is $76,000. So some of the way I'm couching that in that report may seem a little peculiar because what I'm saying is that now that you have the full number, we're looking, we as staff are looking for confirmation that you want us to do this full project, including authorizing a supplemental $76,000 to do the work. And we'd certainly be hopeful that you'd be able to give that to us somewhat quickly, just because it would take us some time to develop bid packages. The first thing we want to do is get the roof fixed. We want to get rain intrusion to stop from going in there. So we'd really like to get on with that, but I don't want to spend $200,000 of your money if we're...unless you tell me that's what you want me to do without the rest. It'd be preferable that if you could tell me that, yes, we really want to do it all, and we understand the magnitude of it, so please go ahead and do it. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yeah, you guys are on the Citizens Committee, so...
Yeah, I mean, the goal is to get it reoccupied. I think we've discussed that, you know, all along. And the question I would have, Randy, is we get everything fixed and everything like that, and we're saying like an interim thing means that we do want to do monitoring, and do we have a plan in place on just exactly how we're going to do the monitoring? And the second part would be, what is the roofer's warranty going to be?
The first question is that the monitoring we would do would be physical inspections, the exterior inspections. Same people that we've had do the investigations for the repairs. I think we've got a good consultant that we can use for that now, that I'm very satisfied with their ability to make important observations. The second question, I don't know the answer to right now, so that's...I haven't finalized writing those specifications. I need to get a better handle on what the maximum length of a roof warranty that we can get is. It may not be as long as you would typically get with a new roof, just because it's going to be a patch of an existing one in place, but I'm going to have to deal with the manufacturer on that and see what they're willing to back up, because that's really where it comes from. It's going to be what the manufacturer of the product is going to be able to represent.
Okay. And that's really kind of the crux of it, you know, too, if we're looking, you know, that we're terming as interim, you know, I would expect, you know, longer than five years out of it, but, you know, we've been down this path before through the years, and so I guess you're being somewhat cautious.
You know, yes, sir, and as I've mentioned before, it's a really challenging design to hold a roof together. The way that there are three separate substructures, three separate hip roofs up above this building that all sit as if, you know, I guess the best I could imagine is that if my iPad were one of those independent structures and this were the parapet wall of the building, instead of the water shooting over that parapet, it sits back here. So all the water shoots behind that parapet, and I think no matter what we do, I'm just really uncomfortable. But frankly, even when we went to some very expensive remodels because of the nature of that building right now, I don't really ever get beyond a point where I could give you about a 90% guarantee that all the roofs, that all the leaks are going to go away, because it's just that complicated having the different structures with the different heights that they exist at. So yes, you're right, I am being very cautious, and I think part of it is saying that it's a three- to five-year interim. That tells us that's really when we need to start getting up there and having eyes on that roof again and making sure that we catch things before they become a problem.
But that's not what we're going to negotiate, right?
I'm going to negotiate every year I can get, sir. Right, of course.
Okay. One of the dimensions we talked about was conversing with the firefighters as to whether they were comfortable with this approach and whether they're ready to move back in and so forth, and so I'd like to ask the fire chief to address those issues. Yeah, they've been briefed on all of the project work to take place, and I think the important point was identified, and that is that the HVAC systems will be looked at and/or replaced or cleaned, and then ongoing monitoring that will occur. And so firefighters have been briefed on that, and as the work continues, we'll continue to give them the information. So what would...just kind of the monitoring question again, what will be the nature of the monitoring of the HVAC system?
So it's going to be a complete cleaning of the HVAC system.
Yeah.
So it's going to go through, it's going to be cleaned, and we're going to remove all of the insulation that's in and around it.
Right.
And then we'll have...then we'll run the system, and then we'll have the air quality person come in again and check the mold spore levels within the building.
But what about monitoring after that? That's what I'm trying to get at. I think that's what we were talking about having done, is that once the project's completed, then talking with the environmental people about what would you do, what would be the appropriate time to come in and monitor, how often would you need to do that? Right. So, but we don't know the answer to that yet?
There's not a technical answer to that question.
Uh-huh.
I think the answer to that question relies more upon what the comfort of the firefighters...
That's kind of why I asked it.
Yes, sir. And certainly after we repair the roof, and we do the mold remediation, and we clean the HVAC system, and we run it, and then we go through and confirm there are no spores there, and we've presumably also, of course, confirmed that the roof doesn't leak, that tells you that there are no leaks. So beyond that, if you saw evidence of leaks, wouldn't be unreasonable to bring in air testing, but I'm not sure there is not a regular pattern of mold spore testing that's an industry standard.
But I'm sure we could, you know, we could probably, once it's done, talk with the company about what would be, you know, there may be even something we do more times than we normally would just to create that confidence going forward. Right. Yeah. At least from my point of view, I think that's probably something we should look at, even if it is, you know, or that is minimally necessary, you know, if you're living there, you kind of like to know regularly that it's okay.
Right.
Okay, other questions?
We've seen things, I've seen things, coming from the community that we should do everything to keep our firefighters comfortable and because they do such a great job for us, which is true. But this is, if we look at this as... us, which is true. But this is, if we, we look at this as a five-year fix, and I know we want to get more out of it, it's about $55,000 per year to do this versus the $15,000 that we're paying for the trailer. Is the, the facilities at the firehouse preferable to our firefighters than the facilities in the trailer? Are they more comfortable, would they be more comfortable in the firehouse than they would be in the trailer?
I think it's, you know, I think the community is kind of driving that they'd rather see a fire station and not temporary buildings around a fire station. When it comes to the firefighters, I think their preference always was to be in a fire station. At this particular point, I don't know if they have looked at it from the perspective of saying, am I going to be more or less comfortable where I'm at? Because we've done a pretty good job of making them comfortable. But it, but it is a temporary, you know, a temporary building, so it can last quite a while. So I'm not sure if it's, it's kind of, there's two roads there, as I understand. I think the community feels like they don't like to see temporary buildings or rather not have that there. So I don't know. We've gotten to the point where it's uncomfortable for the firefighters. I'm not sure if I can give you the, you know, I guess we're talking about how long are we talking, you know, that we keep temporary fire station in place? That might change how comfortable they would be.
Well, I mean, case, a case of point is that our Bank of America building is a temporary building. And it's been there for as long as I've been in town. And I don't think people look at it as a temporary building. It is, is the Bank of America building. It's not the temporary trailer that houses it. And I don't, so if, if we can make the fire station work and it's comfortable for the firefighters, whether it's the existing building or a temporary structure or a new temporary structure, I just would like to see some assurances that we're, we're doing something that is actually beneficial for the firefighters and their comfort and their, and their happiness, and that we're doing the best we can for them. And so that's why I was asking the question, is, is it better to have them in the facilities they're in or in a different temporary facility versus trying to fix something that we don't have 100% guarantee that, or even, maybe even not a 90% guarantee, that this fix will result in an occupiable building?
Yeah, you bring up a really good point. You're right, $13,000 a year, and you kind of do the math, you're spending $276. I mean, you're right, Clark, you want to have a longer, you know, guarantee that this is going to work out, you know, financially for you. And then you bring up the point about the comfort. You know, and as you're asking that question, I'm thinking, okay, what about, you know, is it, you know, is the temporary site a hindrance to the firefighters' ability to do their jobs? You know, probably not, probably don't, you know, go there. You know, for me, you know, if we're going to do it, you know, I want to do it right, even if we have to spend more money. You know, it's the long-term of the building. You know, if you could have something that's going to last 20 years without any issues, I think it's better, you know, to say to spend $400,000 or whatever it takes. You know, of course, you know, with, in reason. But, you know, you spend $276 and you don't have 100% guarantee that it's going to work. You know, that, that's a risky thing, especially, you know, when you know that you got $13,000 a year and it, and it seems to be doing the job. You know, one of the things that, you know, we brought up, last time we talked about the fire station, was that, that there was a, another station somewhere, I guess it was Sonoma County, maybe Marin County, that had a similar design as this, and then we were going to investigate that.
It didn't exist.
It didn't exist. So this is, this is, this is a one-off then?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's unfortunate, because it would have been good to get that info if it was available and see if they had the same problems. Chances are they would, if it was a design flaw instead of a construction flaw. But since we've, we've already worked on it once before, it sounds like it's a design flaw.
I think I might be just to complicate it further. This discussion is in the staff report, but, you know, how much we estimate it would cost to really fix the roof?
Oh, that's right. It was like the $500.
You want to give some of those figures?
Oh, no, it was a million dollars.
Yeah, okay. So there are a bunch of different options on really fixing the roof, and it's, it's one of those things in the eye of the beholder. The original cost estimate to, in addition to all the work that this project will do, but also removing the existing metal skin coating that's on top of there, was $300,000. That, that's an old number now, so it's, it's probably up from there. And that did not include any of the mold remediation. As you start to get higher and higher, as you start to talk about, one of the other options you could do is you could take the roof and change the pitch of the rafters. So you could flatten it and get as many of them as you can to hang over the parapet. The challenge with that is, because you don't get the highest pitch of the roof, its peak up at the highest point, you end up with a lot of gaps. So you end up with a lot of places where you still have water sheeting behind the parapet. So even though you're looking at spending $500,000 to $600,000, you have that lower level of probability that you're never going to have leaks, because you've still got water going in the same place. It's previously demonstrated that it doesn't like to go in the way. It does, it just doesn't see well. The, the final option that I would look at, that I think of as an architectural item, is to raise that peak, raise the final peak of the roof, and then again, set your rafter angle so that you get as much of the water as you can completely over the parapet walls. You still end up because of, which is common for most buildings, but it's just more complicated in this building because of the multiple structures on it. You still end up with a bunch of the mechanical equipment that's in the back of the building. It's actually, it's on the backside of it, so it's the east side of the building, at the far end of the apparatus bay, that you can't get that piece to sheet where you want it to. So now you maybe have a 90, 95% of the water sheeting where you want it to, but you've still got X amount of water, and you've spent maybe $800 to $1 million, $800,000 to $1 million, and you still have the same design that you're struggling with. So there's lots of options. Certainly, I think, I think the one you have right now, that, that the council's already approved money for to patch the roof and to do the mold remediation in the building, is, is a pretty decent fix. If, if it's the council's desire that you would like to see the firefighters from Station 81 back in Station 81 and out of those portable trailers, I think this is your, your highest cost benefit option. And I, and I know that I can't give you a much better lifetime than a three to five year, but, you know, darn it, it's a roof. And they leak, and I suspect that there's a bunch of people in this room that have had a leak, and when you try and get somebody out to fix it, it's a real challenge, because the leak always appears at the furthest point possible from where it actually entered your roof. And so you chase it back and forth. And part of the problem, the challenge with doing buildings, is even with the mold remediation, as I've been very clear on, at least I hope I was very clear in the staff report, we've done destructive investigation. We've done the best we can. That doesn't mean that's the only place where there's mold. I just, I can't tell you that without taking all the sheet rock off the walls and being able to look at each piece. Might there be somewhere else? Yes. Have, have we done what I think is the most prudent and reasonable approach we can, short of taking every piece of sheet rock off the building? Yes, I think we have. I think we've really been as diligent as we can. But stuff happens. And, and some piece that we just didn't catch, some spot that we didn't catch, might happen. So I, I hate coming to you as your engineer and not being able to give you certainty, but I think the price of certainty would be more than you would bear. So that's why I'm trying to just caveat this and say, if it's your sense that you want your firefighters back in the station, then, then this number that's almost $300,000 is a pretty good number. I'm, I'm going to sleep okay with this number. I'm going to think that, that we will have done a good job under my charge, and that the roof will be repaired, and I'm going to have a really high confidence level in it. But I certainly suspect that we're going to need to go back, and we're really going to be monitoring it, and we may need to spend a little bit more money here and there to maintain it as we get into that three to five year life.
You know, just to be honest with you guys, I, I'm not ready to vote on this. I, I know there's the timeframe. I, I'd like to have a little bit more consultation with staff and just get a little bit better understanding of it. You know, I mean, it's hard to do it in a council meeting. You know, when we look at the $13,000 a year, you know, times up by 20, you know, that's still less than the cost of doing this repair. And, you know, I understand the need to get the guys in a permanent building. But the, the facility that they're in right now is, it is a nice temporary building. But, you know, you got the Baylands project, there's the potential of perhaps movement, it's, you know, the station's someplace else, and we haven't really flushed that out all the way yet. But I would be ready to make a decision at our next meeting, but not tonight.
So you want to re-agendize this, is what you're saying?
I, I would like to. If not, I would vote no.
Doesn't sound like Terry's going to vote yes either, so.
Actually, you know, I, I wouldn't jump to that conclude, conclusion. Looking at the, did a tour of the Five Star Cafe, and we all know the longer you leave mold, the more you have moisture, the more decrepit things get, the quicker they start deteriorating, and the least, the less chances are that we're going to have a successful outcome on this. I don't think relocating the fire station is imminent, because I don't think that that is going to be something that we need to deal with, certainly in the next three to five years. I, I wouldn't anticipate the, the needs changing. If anything, it may be that they need to have a, another fire station. If there's a big project out on the Baylands that goes through, they would probably need something with larger apparatus and, you know, different capabilities, and would probably be serviced from a different location. So I understand that we want to have it have the look and the feel and the appearance of stability, and that our firehouse is something that's part of the community, because it is, and we appreciate those guys. And if it was the council's decision, I'm happy to wait till our next meeting if it makes Cliff more, more comfortable, but I would be willing to vote in favor of it at this point also.
I guess, I guess the question to staff would be, I know we'd like to get work done before it starts raining, so is this two weeks window detrimental to doing that? Or would you like to get moving on it, you know, pronto?
I was trying to quickly pull up the farmer's almanac on my iPad, sir, to see what the weather patterns are going to be like, and that's, and that's the rub of it, right? I mean, I just really don't know if those rains are going to come in, if we're going to keep the, the ski and the snowboard equipment in the, in the garage for another year of light rains. So I, I think, based on what we've seen before, no, I think we could live with two weeks.
Okay. Because, I mean, really, it's, I look at the firehouse as an iconic part of the community, and this is something that's sad, is what happens, is what's happened over the years. And if we don't do something, you know, Terry, to your point, like the Five Star Cafe, it is going to rot, and it's going to rot in place, and that would be even more of an atrocity to allow that to happen. And I think this fix here, I, I think we have to try something. And I, and I believe that, you know, I believe the manufacturer, at least the feedback I've gotten from you, Randy, is really motivated to make this work. Because it's kind of egg on their face, too, if it doesn't.
I'm sorry. If, I mean, while the design is somewhat unique, because we have these independent structures above and behind a parapet wall, the underlying rubber membrane material is on fire stations throughout this end of the peninsula. I think nearly every one of San Francisco's fire stations has the same rubberized material on it. So over the years, since this has been installed, the products had some improvements and enhancements, and they understand a little better about how to use it. And so, yeah, I, I think it's going to be done. I mean, I think the repair is going to be okay. But I just know what happens every time I think that, when I can't break out my calculator and really give you an answer on it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, as you pointed out, Cliff, Clark and I are the facilities committee, and we agree with this recommendation that the staff has come forward, and we've talked about it with the city engineer and with the fire chief. And for the reasons that Clark gives and that they give, this just seemed like the most reasonable thing to do, you know, in the near term. It does seem a shame that, you know, we have a beautiful fire station that we really aren't using. And if this is a way to, to kind of make that happen, it seems worth giving it a try. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah. Well, you know, and perhaps I'll be there as well. You've had more opportunity to
That's true.
to understand the situation, you know, you're at the firehouse, you know, and to me, you know, I'm just looking at them, I'm looking at the math, and I'm looking at the comfort that the current firefighters currently have. You're right, you have a building and you want to maintain it, and you don't want to see it fall apart. I don't think we're there with this building. The Five Star Cafe, that thing was, that thing was, you know, falling apart before we even bought the thing. I mean, it's, it, its life was, you know, long past. But this is, this is a newer structure. And you're right, Clark, there is that pride of, of, you know, maintaining certain iconic buildings like a firehouse. So, you know, I'm willing to, you know, perhaps, you know, go with it, you know, at the next meeting, if you guys are willing to wait. I just, I would like to have, just, you know, I'd just like to sit down with staff and, and the chief and just kind of get a better footing.
Carolyn Parker wanted to weigh in on this.
First of all, I'd like to say that it's, it's, you know, I'm, I really feel that the public needs to speak on this. And I wasn't, you know, I saw a lot of discussion about whether we should vote or not. Anyway, what I want to know is, has this community finished paying off this building? It seems like we spent a lot of money on the building, and I think that to just sort of abandon it to, to prefab, another prefab building, I don't even know if it's paid off. You know, I think we should, we should invest in this building because this, the citizens have been paying for this. This is a lovely building. If there's, you know, and, and if the design is, is bad, you know, we have to spend money to, to fix it. But, you know, we, we put a lot of money and time and effort into the design. We spent money on the design, we spent money on the building. I don't know if we floated a bond for it. I don't know if the bond's been paid. But I think we should go ahead and, and fix it and use it. Thank you.
You know, Chief, if you could just provide clarification. I mean, the, the building is used. The firefighters just don't sleep there. I mean, I, I was, I mean, there are some things in the building.
Well, the apparatus is parked there, and when a call comes in, they go across the street and get on the apparatus and respond. But that's the
That's, that's the extent of it. Okay, so there's no time spent in it. Okay, all right.
Yeah. I see Stuart, there's Stuart. The fire station was financed with the CLPs, as I recall, which is a form of a bond.
It was financed with a lease revenue bond.
Right.
Which is being paid for by the successor agency to the redevelopment agency.
Right. Which is still, how long running approximately?
I'm thinking, this is where I wish Betsy was here. She would know off the top of her head.
2035?
No, it's not that long.
No, no.
It would be at least, it would be no later than another, until '26. But if you gave me like But if you gave me like three minutes to go back to my office and pull the bond issue, I could tell you.
Somewhere in the 20s.
Yeah, but it was, it is a bond issue that the taxpayers have been paying off for the years.
Right, and it's being paid for by the RPT, it's being paid for by the successor agency. So it's not being paid for by the general taxpayers of Brisbane, but specifically the increment, the tax increment from, I believe it's either Area 1 or Area 2. So it's not being paid for by the general taxpayers of Brisbane.
What specific taxpayers?
It would be the, it would be the taxpayer, it would be the properties, and I believe it's the ones located in Area 2. So, you know, it would be called the Baylands.
Okay, is that, all right. Yeah, Dana?
Cliff, you and I had similar thinking, because I looked at this and I said, quarter of a million dollars for three years, who's kidding? I mean, seriously, only three, five years, maybe? And no, now it's up to almost $300,000, because they're asking 279 plus, and we'll come back for more, it's something I heard there. So I'm like, I'm one of the people that thinks the fireplace isn't a fireplace, the fire station is in the wrong place. Because, and I thought it was good that there was the mention of the potential tear down in order to create a, what we were hoping would be a street-level crossing on, to the train tracks from-
Valley?
Valley Drive, to be able to egress away from basically getting stopped at that, at Bay Shore. So I know this has got to be an awful decision to make, because you're seeing a multimillion-dollar thing turn into nothing, and yet $12,000, $13,000 a year seems so much more reasonable than any portion of the $300,000 that you're asking right now. So because I think it's in the wrong place, I have always thought it should have been, maybe not torn down, but elsewhere. And I just, when you're nickel-and-diming people to do programs in the rec department, but you're going to spend $300,000 to fix a roof, I wonder, all of a sudden, you were saying $300,000 might do the whole job, I wouldn't want an interim repair, because, you know, it already hasn't worked. The existing roof already hasn't worked. And so, you know, anybody who's had a roof that's problematic, you just want to tear the whole thing off and put a whole new one down. And that's what we ended up having to do with our roof, because it was, you know, foam, and then the foam settled over time, and yada, 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 and the waters would sit in the divots, and then one, one wind, one that, a couple of years ago, just came and just pulled all that foam off of our roof. And so, we actually weren't, we didn't have a choice at that point. But anyway, I still think that repairing the whole thing makes more sense than an interim job, because if that $300,000 doesn't last more than three years, then more egg on our face. Thank you.
Just one historical note. The location of the fire station, actually, we ran a citizen survey, a mail survey, and gave people options. And this was a site that by far the great majority of people picked for, it's equidistant between Old Brisbane and Northeast Ridge. So that's why, and of course, it was cited there because the city and GBMID already own the property, and so it was also financially feasible. So just as a historical background there. But the issue still remains as to the relative cost versus benefits, of course. And the question is, does the council wish to respect council members' lenses?
I'm happy to move that we extend the meeting for, till the next-
Extend this issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think staff's comfortable with that, and I would go ahead and-
Okay, so we'll put it on the next agenda.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
Do you want to get me some water?
Okay, coming up.
Thank you, sir.
So the next item, item B, is item B under your business, which is the community survey having to do with the Baylands. So who's going to start us off?
I'll start us off.
Okay, Clay?
Now, speaking of surveys, what you have before you tonight is a proposal from FM3 Consulting Services to conduct a survey for us relative to choices on the Baylands for potential future development. The staff and council subcommittee interviewed two companies earlier this year. We felt that the proposal from FM3, after a couple of meetings that we had with them and kind of fleshing out the various options and directions, was the appropriate consulting contract to go forward with. Shakari Byerly from FM3 is here tonight, so I'm not going to go through all the details of what's in the staff report. I'll be available to answer any questions, but I'm going to go ahead and let her make the presentation.
Thank you very much, Clay. And good evening, Mayor Potem and council members. My name is Shakari Byerly, and I'm a vice president with FM3 Research Services. We really appreciate the opportunity to present our qualifications, as well as a proposed approach for helping you to understand community attitudes around the Baylands and potential development. So you all have the full proposal, however, I have prepared just some summary slides for your benefit, as well as that of the public that will review our background, as well as what we propose for the project. And I won't go into all of the detail here, I'm certainly happy to ask questions about the contents of the proposal. But our firm is, does have a local office here in the Bay Area, right in Oakland, making it very easy for us to be present for meetings and presentations as needed. We think one of the key benefits, actually, that we would bring to the project in assisting the city is that we have the capacity of a national research organization with offices in Santa Monica, as well as Madison, Wisconsin, but with our local presence, that we really offer the client services and really the background and experience of working with many municipalities throughout the Bay Area. Just a summary of our local experience, we have worked previously with the county of San Mateo, both in their budget and fiscal planning around transportation issues, specifically and a number of other policy issues. We've worked with the city of Pacifica, as well as the Burlingame Elementary School District, and a number of other local clients. We do serve as the lead research firm for the city and county of San Francisco, and just did their biennial community survey with some similar components that we might be recommending for you all, should you select our firm. We also have specific experience working with a range of clients or interests on land use and development issues. We've worked with local communities, such as Roseville, which is referenced here in the slides, on understanding, in that particular instance, development downtown and what citizens were interested in. We've worked with private companies, as well as coalitions, to understand how particular projects or developments might impact the quality of life, and how residents really view or community views the parcels in question. One of the things that isn't represented in our proposal, but I think might be valuable for you all to know, is that we're also a leader in assessing public attitudes toward conservation and open space issues. And so, we've represented a range of interests around the table, and I think we would be highly sensitive to the interest involved with the Baylands as well. So just a bit about our research process. I think another of our strengths is that we don't believe in a cookie-cutter approach to conducting opinion research, and I think particularly in a community as intimate, given the size, and as engaged as a community in Brisbane. We want to make sure that we work with you to develop a transparent and inclusive research process, and so we built that into the project components and the phases. We also understand the importance of having a very objective instrument, so that the, all of the stakeholders and community members are comfortable with the research components and the questions that might be asked as a part of that. We want to make sure that the community feels that the process is fair, and that the questions are fair and objective as well. We also want to build upon the excellent work that you all have done to collect community feedback in the draft EIR process, as well as research that has been done previously on the general plan and revisions to that. So what are we proposing? We're essentially looking or envisioning a four-stage process that would begin really with developing a community input process around the research itself, so that when we do move forward with a questionnaire, with focus groups, whatever components we finally decide, that everyone has confidence in that process. So we'd like to engage in a period of really discussion, education for us, and then also working with the community to build that credibility. We propose to start with qualitative research, so pulling a random sample of voters to participate in focus groups, either three to five, that will enable us to assess just general attitudes in the community toward the quality of life, growth and development, the particular parcel in question, and various very general development options. Following that initial set of focus groups and public reporting on the results of that qualitative research, we hope that will help inform the actually, the actual quantitative research instrument, the survey of your entire community on the issues, both that are, that come out of the EIR process, as well as the focus groups incorporated into that survey research instrument. And then finally, we would expect to work with the city to make the community aware of those results in whatever capacity possible, either through community meetings or presentations at the council, or with other stakeholders. Bit about the research process, again, I won't go into great detail, but we really envision this being a collaborative and iterative process. This isn't a case where we're the experts and we can tell you how it goes. We want to work with the city and staff in particular to make sure that we fully understand all of the work, hard work that has been done beforehand, a result of the EIR process and public comment period, as well as the community meetings that may follow in reviewing the results of that EIR process with the community, so that we can really make this survey research process work well with what you all have already started. Once we have an initial understanding of all of the concerns that we need to be aware of in designing the research, we will then present a more formal format of a proposed approach, how that community input and stakeholder input will be incorporated into the research design, and we'll present that to the city for your approval before moving forward with the qualitative and quantitative research. I do send regrets from our partner, Dave Metz, who will be the design, the study, research leader on this project. He had a family commitment that prevented him from being here tonight as scheduled, but you can contact either of us in our Oakland office, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues?
I have one for staff, and, kind of legal question, because we brought up earlier, and I know our open space in the committee is asked, along with numerous other folks, on extending the EIR, and I for one would, would have a tendency to honor that. And so, is it, would it be legal for us to extend the comment period for X number of whatever reason?
Let me give you, if I could, some, some background in the EIR comment period and what the discretion is that the, that the council has. Generally, when an EIR is issued, there is, as the council knows, a comment period, and that is set forth in both the SEQA statutes and in the SEQA guidelines. The normal comment period is 45 days if the EIR is circulated with the State Clearing House, as almost all are, and then 60 days is generally established as the maximum time period that's recommended for comments on an EIR. Now, the, the guidelines do state that for unusual circumstances, the comment period can be extended past that 60-day period, and the council has extended the period, I believe, to 120 days, rather than the standard 60 days. So the 120 days is already under the SEQA guidelines, substantially longer than is recommended as the standard comment period. That being said, it's up to the council's discretion in terms of whether or not to grant additional extension. There is no provision in SEQA that would prohibit the granting of an extension, although, again, under the guidelines, the standard comment period is 60 days, and they generally recommend against extending it much beyond that, except for unusual circumstances. I know that there are, in addition to the SEQA guidelines, some concerns that if it's extended too far past the current date, that it could create complications because of some other EIRs that may be issued, overlapping notices of preparation. I think that the community development director may have a couple of comments in terms of potential problems, based on how long it's extended. However, I want to be clear, that it is up to the council's discretion in terms of whether it's extended beyond the current 120 days, and the length of that time is, again, up to the council's discretion, in consideration of what would best serve the city, the citizens, and in view of the SEQA guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Why are you asking that in your reference to the survey?
Yeah, I know. I'm going to segue into that now.
Yeah, okay.
And that, and that part is, if we did extend it, and I'm referring this to staff, and sorry, Shakari, but it kind of rhymes. That if we did extend it, would this affect the survey timelines that were proposed? And that's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I was clueing in on your, your line of questioning, so I think probably, if, assuming that you approve the, the contract tonight, we would probably wait a few weeks to execute it based on whatever decision you might make on August 19th in terms of the extension of the timeframe, because that would affect the schedule. So we'll just work with, I mean, we've already pushed the schedule back, I think, once or twice already, so, I mean, the, the schedule obviously has a lot to do with what the comment period ends, and the, because we were planning on trying to do a lot of this work during the time that the consultant would be responding to the comments.
Right, right. And that's kind of what I was thinking would be-
Yeah, well, it's a very good point, and I think just, you know, we'll, we'll work with the consultant and figure that out, and obviously, you probably, you're not going to make a decision tonight, as I understand, you'll make a decision on August 19th to do, to extend it, and how long to extend it.
Right, and we'll get feedback from our community development director also, so...
Yeah, well, I was just going to point out that, as noted by the chair, that there is some flexibility into the, into the dates as we proceed with the survey, because clearly you don't want to be doing that until, you know, we've got all the information on, from the EIR, and if there's going to be an extension, then that's going to push everything back, and that's actually already built into the contract, I think, so...
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure they've been through this before.
We're very flexible, and we appreciate being a part of the process or in conversations early on, because this is not what people typically think of as polling. We really look at this as a more of an academic or research study. We don't have a specific proposal or project for, say, that you all have identified and you're thinking about going to the ballot or something of that nature. This is really a- This is really a community feedback and perception study. And so, it's important that, you know, we defer to the process you have in place for, you know, public comment on the EIR and any other stakeholder input that you are trying to assess before you move into developing specific research instruments, be it a focus group moderation guide or an actual survey questionnaire.
Right, yeah. Cliff and I, you know, we've been talking about this for a while now, and with the staff. And as just was pointed out, we felt that it was important that the survey firm, you know, spent some time here and talked to the subcommittee and other members of the council and staff and get a feel for what are all the issues, what are all the questions. And then, when they move into the focus groups, you know, they're going to be really informed. They're going to know what people are talking about. So, when a survey is formulated, it comes from a base of knowledge that's been built up over a period of months, rather than trying to do something in a big hurry and not really know, you know, the complications and complexities of the issues, which are considerable. And so, that's kind of our thinking.
Sure, okay. No, I'm actually very happy with the subcommittee and staff's recommendation to move forward with this, but I just wanted to make sure the logistics, in case, you know, that, you know, I know that we're very sensitive to, to our committees and commissions on, you know, timeframes and stuff like that, because, you know, we do want them to go through stuff thoroughly. And then, you know, and we do get that kind of work from, audio work from our open space and ecology committee, and they've been consistent that way for 15, 16 years, been in existence, so.
Yeah, you know, the survey is going to be extremely important for this community to take ownership of the project. And, you know, it can't be the council that makes the decisions. It's got to come from the community, and the community needs to have the right information. And, yeah, when we interviewed Shakira's firm, we were quite confident that we were getting an organization that wasn't going to be cookie cutter, that was going to frame it in a way where we reach out to the stakeholders, not only getting information, but just helping to be part of the process of formulating the questions, because the community has to feel confident that the questions are coming from the community. You know, to get the community's input, you need the questions, you know, stemming from them. And so, yeah, I'm looking forward to getting to that, that stuff. I, you know, I think we all are looking forward to that, you know, where you're actually starting to plan, rather than having to just deal with all the technical things about, you know, the issues with the EIR. But you need a base first, and the EIR provides that.
It's a process.
Um, forgive me, but I'm a bit confused on the timeline structure where we're going to be surveying what the citizens want before we know what is even feasible, because we have a draft EIR that is not approved yet. And so, we're planning to do the survey while the draft EIR questions or comments are being addressed.
Yeah.
Not until after the comments have been addressed and it comes back in a final EIR, not approved final EIR.
Right.
So, before, so in between that period.
Right.
So, the, the dates we have on our slideshow are obviously wrong.
Yeah, right.
They're going to change.
They're going to change, yeah.
Okay, so, Councilmember Okano, we've been in conversations with the city for, I think, several months, not really knowing when the draft, when the comments.
We've all been in conversation with the city for more than several months on when anything may happen, because it is a very complicated issue.
So, I apologize for the dates.
No, 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 I just, I wanted to make sure we're in the process, mostly for the public and my benefit, to know where in the process we're going to be asking the opinion of our citizenry, because we can't look at a draft EIR and evaluate it based on a project being to our liking. It has to be on the actual physical attributes of the possible projects on the environment. So, it's, it's one of those things that, just because our citizens may want something, that's not a reason to approve or deny an EIR.
No, it's a different issue.
So, it's, it's a whole different issue. So, I just wanted to make sure it was in that, the sequence was where I was at.
Yeah.
And part of our first phase is really understanding what information do residents desire.
Right.
What is their level of awareness about the Baylands in general? Are there general feelings about growth and development in the community, so that we can prepare visual aids or maps or other materials that raise their level of, baseline level of awareness to even be able to respond to a community survey?
Right. So, to be explicit, the idea is to do the survey after what is called the final EIR is available, which means response to all the comments. And one of the difficult things even for me to get my head around is that you have what's called a final EIR, but it really doesn't go to sleep, so to speak, until the council certifies it.
Right.
But we have been advised by the environmental consultant that you don't want to certify it until the council has come up with what it is they kind of like to have as an approved plan. Because you want to make sure you've studied all the environmental dimensions. If it's, if it's a new combination of things, then you've got new information that may need to be derived from further study. So, there's this, this difficult realization that what is called the final EIR is really not the final EIR. It's, it's kind of the raw final EIR, and it doesn't really go into place legally until the council certifies it. And in the interim, then, there will be this whole planning process in which we go through all the alternatives and maybe want to put combinations together, but we need some assistance in that planning process. And that's what the survey is for, to get, generate information from the public as to what it is their preferences are and what kinds of things they would accept and what kinds of things they wouldn't accept. And that gives us an idea about, you know, the planning process itself. So, I think that's what we were trying to achieve. Does it sound right to you?
It does. And we're, we're happy to, again, work collaboratively with you, particularly in this initial phase, we believe is so important for us to understand the issues, to become familiar with your community, and to, to understand what information the public is interested in having so that they can provide informed input.
Okay. I know Michelle wants to, okay, thank you. You may, we may have to ask you back, but that was a good presentation. Thank you. Michelle?
Michelle Sammon, Brisbane resident. So, I have a question. Do you believe in angels? Think about it for a minute. And I know that may not seem relevant, but it is. Back in the 90s, when I was working for Red Rose Collection, I remember my boss coming in and said, "Look, it's right here on the cover of Time Magazine. Over 90-something percent of Americans believe in angels." And I went, "Really?" And of course, I immediately flipped to the inside cover where the stats were listed. And of the thousand or so people that they surveyed, the people who answered yes were counted, and the people who answered no were counted, and the people who said, "I don't know," were not counted. So, actually, there was only about 98 people who answered yes, a few people who were willing to risk saying no and be struck down by lightning in case they were wrong, and everyone else didn't know. But that was on the cover of Time Magazine as a fact that 96% or whatever it was of Americans believed in angels. And that's one of the problems I have with surveys and types of information like this. And so, I advise you to proceed with caution. First of all, how are you going to pick a random sample of Brisbane voters? Because there's nothing at all random about the people in Brisbane and how they vote. And that right there gives me pause for concern.
Could, could I interject?
Yeah.
That the survey we're talking about is a male survey of all voters.
Yes, but to develop that survey, you are going to choose random people to be in focus groups to develop the questions. Just doing the questions has influence. And that brings me to the part that is really a challenge for me, because Shakira said, "Well, we don't have, it's not like a polling thing, because we don't have anything on the ballot." But yes, we do. We've been promised that we would be voting on whether we had housing on the Baylands or not. So, there definitely is something on the ballot, or slated to be on the ballot, or hopefully will be on the ballot. And then, I have to ask, what is the actual purpose of the survey? And you sort of explained it a little bit, but if the actual purpose of the survey is for you, the city council, to assess the appetite of the citizens of Brisbane for development or not development, or what they want on the Baylands, then why the hell is UPC paying for the survey? Because to me, we're back in the same old cycle of conflict of interest that developed the community, now, community prepared plan, where the developer is paying for it and has undue influence over the outcome. And this is where I have a really big problem with this. So, I ask you, what is the actual purpose of the survey? Why are we doing a survey? So that you four, or soon-to-be-five, people know what the results of the survey are, or what, how the people of Brisbane feel, or how all the people of Brisbane feel? Or do the people who don't vote don't count? Do the children don't count? And so, I guess I really have some serious questions about, not just methodology and survey, and I'm sure that these people do their surveys very, very well, but I went to their website and I really looked over their whole client list and everywhere. And yes, it's a diverse group of clients, and yes, it's a diverse group of PR about what they have done and haven't done. But there was sure a lot of development up there, and I wonder how many of those developments didn't happen because of the results of their survey? I wonder that. I ask that question, because, and I wonder how many elections didn't go through or did go through based on what the results of the survey were. I've worked with a lot of data in my career. I'm, I do marketing. And I know how you can influence the results by how you ask the question. And it's, it's really a masterful thing. And so, even doing the survey and having it paid for by UPC, I would rather we paid for it ourselves and had no influence by UPC whatsoever on the survey. I, I just really have a problem with that. And I, my problem with that is justified based on, on the community quote-unquote preferred plan. I went to those meetings, and there was not one single person there that wanted nine to 12 million square feet of development on the Baylands. Not one, no one there that was a citizen of Brisbane, got up and said, "I want 12 million square feet of development on the Baylands. I don't want," and no one said, "I want 9 million."
I think we've got some answers for you.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I'd like to know how you chose the two companies that you reviewed, who recommended them, because there was like 20 companies out there that I saw when I Googled it. The, and so, I just want to know, I mean, what influence does UPC have on this? Why are they paying for it, if it's so important to us? Those are my questions. And so, do you believe in angels? Think about it.
You want to weigh in?
Yeah, I mean, as far as UPC paying for it and what influence they're going to have on the survey, I'd say none. Is that, is that a fair statement?
They've had no influence or no participation up to this point in the survey. I think they obviously have a lot of interest in what's going to take place.
Sure.
Major stakeholder in the whole process, but the idea is, has been that, you know, that the city was going to pick the consultant and that we were going to be the lead in terms of working with the consultant.
Yeah, and I think we'd all be fools if we thought that any of the proposed specific plans were the plan. And the whole purpose of the survey is, is to formulate a specific plan on what can or can't go out there, or what can go out there. And the EIR is going to kind of guide that. And then, the survey would help focus that, to develop a specific plan. That's.
I think one of the concepts we talked about with the subcommittee was that there may ultimately be a series of, of surveys, because as, as you kind of hone down in terms of this, we get more specific in terms of what may or may not be the desire we need to move forward with. The other thing, I did have it in the staff report, but I just want to point it out, was that the other kind of data point that we want to have in place before we do the surveying is the financial analyses, and there's going to be three or four different types of studies and stuff, because that will help inform, you know, the options that we, you know, have available and what can work and what, you know, what can't work. So, there's, there's a couple of different data points that need to be put in, in place there. In terms of UPC paying for it, I mean, it's been kind of the city's policy and the council's policy that anything relative to the Baylands, that we negotiate to have that reimbursed through our reimbursement agreement with UPC. That's a council policy decision, and that's what I pursued in terms of discussions with UPC in terms of paying for this.
And I do agree with you, Michelle, that, you know, it depends on how you ask the question. I think that's very important, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't understand that, you know. I'm sure the subcommittee's probably talked about that with the consultant, you know.
If I may. And just a point of clarification, the focus groups will not be used to draft the survey questionnaire. Our first and most important priority is to develop a process where everyone can have confidence in the development of the questionnaire. So, the first thing that we need to understand is what information do citizens want in order to make informed decisions about, related to the Baylands, whatever that is. The purpose of the focus groups is to hear from, from residents about how they feel about the parcels involved, how they feel about the quality of life in community, in the community, what are some of their general concerns with growth and development. The actual community survey, which everyone will be provided with an opportunity to participate in, is separate and apart from that information gathering phase. We will have to develop a separate phase for the questionnaire development process. Everyone has to have confidence in the objectivity of those questions. Otherwise, there's, there's no point in actually doing a, a community survey. So, we, you know, our main interest and one of our core values is on the integrity of the research. And, you know, to the, the public's point, you know, you can lie with statistics, but, but our interest, quite frankly, is in, you know, getting as close to perfect as we can in terms of community consensus around the research process and the research instrument. We don't presume to have any questions on hand, and our proposal was fairly general, just to defer to that, because we need to have a number of community conversations, community conversations with the council, and understanding of the various pieces of information that are informing, you know, all the decisions that you need to make.
Yeah, sure.
I, I believe you. I believe that I, I, I trust what she says. But the thing is, is that I've taken our surveys, and it says, on a, you know, something like, on a scale of one to 10, how important it is to you to have a high school in Brisbane? On a scale of one to 10, how important it is to you to have recreation? How important it is to you to have open space or wildland space? How important it is to you, Michelle, to save San Bruno Mountain, you know? But the flip side of the But the flip side of the coin is, what are you willing to pay for it? Are you willing to have people live and housing on land that you believe is toxic, so that you can have a high school in Brisbane? Is that the kind of question we're going to ask in the survey? Because that's the kind of question that's real. What is the cost to the future and to the environment of what you want for the quality of life today? Okay? And this is my concern with this type of methodology. Yes, you're going to ask questions, and they're going to be really seeming very straightforward. And how you couch the answers, it's a pretty straightforward question. Do you believe in angels? That's a straightforward question. But the answer, and how you interpret the data, is so not straightforward, that it's scary. And, and this is kind of what happened in the past, when we've done these kind of surveys to find out what people really feel and think. And I would rather that you spent time having some true community forums, where people come and tell you, at your request, what they think, and what they would be willing to give up. Are, yes, we want, we want businesses in Crocker Industrial Park, and we want that tax money, because it is really, really good for Brisbane. But we don't want our children breathing diesel fuel. So we don't want it 100 yards from our school. Enough so that we stopped it from happening. So that's the kind of question. What's the trade-off? And if you don't make that clear, it all seems like, yeah, I want a high school, yeah, I want a football field, yeah, I want soccer, I want recreation, I want a swimming pool, I want a Mission Blue Community Center. Am I willing to give up the mountain for it? Am I willing to give up, you know, and have people live on poisoned land? Am I willing to, what am I willing to give up? Am I willing to sell the future? And so those are the kind of questions that you need to ask. Those are the kind of questions that you need to know, and that you're going to be responsible for answering when you decide whether the EIR... I mean, I wouldn't be spending the amount of time that I am reading it if I didn't think it was important, if I didn't see the mistakes that we've made in the past, and to try to rectify them. This is a serious issue. And this is a serious issue that your granddaughters, granddaughters, are going to have to deal with, if we still have a planet. So it is not about UPC's profit, or Brisbane sells tax base. It is about our very future of what we decide now, of what we're going to do. And can you put that in a survey? And can you answer those questions? And can you assess people's, you know, appetite for this? I don't know. Pretty genius if you can. Or is this just another way to kind of play the field? And that's, that's really where my concerns are.
Yeah. No, I, I value your concerns very much, and share them. And from my point of view, of course, I happen to be a social scientist, and therefore I have some understanding of how you can bias surveys, and how you can mislead people, and misconstrue information. And you mentioned how to lie with statistics, or actually, there's a classic book by that name. So I think we're at least not so naive that we're not aware of all those traps that, that we can fall into. But on the other hand, we need to do our best job that we can to find out, you know, where people are at, and that the questions that we need to ask need to be sophisticated, and as unbiased as anybody can imagine to make them. And they do involve asking various kinds of trade-offs. You know, what are people willing to do versus this, and versus that? And, and you know, I don't know whether you remember or not, but we had that survey having to do with the whole issue of the Crocker Industrial Park, and the Northeast Ridge, you know, how far were people willing to go in order, you know, to fight the de-annexation efforts? And, and those were all trade-off questions.
Yes.
And, and we got that sophistication built in there, because we used the Public Research Institute from San Francisco State. And they understood that kind of sophistication, and I think this firm does too. We actually tried to find out whether PRI was still, you know, available and interested in doing this sort of thing. Unfortunately, because of budget cuts at the state level, they no longer exist. And so it was through contacts there, where we developed a list of, to answer your question, of firms who do this kind of thing, and do it only on behalf of, you know, public agencies. And so we wanted to make sure that there was no, you know, bias in the firm, and, and so that's how we picked the ones to go after. It's part of that process.
They don't just do it for public agencies.
Pardon?
They don't, do not do this work only for public agencies. They do this work for business agencies as well.
But I mean, that, that they specialize in, in doing things for public agencies, that really is their, their major endeavor. There aren't very many firms who, who do that. And there's actually only one in Samonito County. And that's the firm that did the previous survey for UPC, which obviously wouldn't make any sense for us to use. So, you know, that didn't come on the list. But, you know, that's one of the firms, they would have been happy to do it. And, you know, they are a professional firm, probably would have done okay, but there was always the taint there, that, you know, they had that relationship, and we didn't want anything of that nature to be involved in the process. So we wanted someone who was a firm that, you know, had really got a lot of experience, and done a lot of different kinds of things, and will understand the sort of situation we have. And I think we'll try to go through the process that will deal with your concerns about making this a, a survey that, that's credible, that everyone who looks at it says, okay, the information that's going to be derived from this is actually going to be an accurate reflection of what the citizens of Brisbane think. You know, that, that's what the point is. And if it doesn't do that, then, then it's a failure. I agree. But that, that is the objective anyway, and that's what we're going to try to do. And it'll, it'll be done in a public process, and, and all the stakeholders will have a chance to look at it and weigh in, and, and say what they believe about the structure, and the coverage, and whether it's fair, and so forth. And then, you know, then we administer it, and, and see where the people are at. And it becomes a guidance to the council as to, you know, what the people want us to do, because eventually, it's the people who will decide, as you pointed out, there's going to be a vote, then there isn't much point in planning something that we already know the people are going to approve in the first place. And that's, that's a waste of effort on everybody's part. So this is what we're trying to do, is to find out, you know, what the level of confidence and, and specific objectives that people have in mind, and things that they can't live with, and people that they, things that they can't live with. And then to create a, a plan that responds to that community input. I think that's really what we're trying to do. And, and in a certain sense, you have to trust us, that that's what we really want to do. And in another sense, it's important that everybody participates in that, so we're, we're held to that high standard.
Yeah. I understand the devil's dilemma that you're faced with. I really do. I'm just, want to make sure that we're really clear on what we're doing and what we're asking, and, and everything else. And it's almost like, not whether you can, I, I know you can manipulate the data, it's almost, how can you help but, in certain cases? So, and, and this is one, and this is one situation where I actually think that you should change, change from your normal policy, and that only the city of Brisbane pays for I, I just kind of feel that way ethically, that it belongs to you, and you alone, and then you decide, as a council, what you want to share and what you don't want to share. Or you decide that you're going to share absolutely every detail and nuance with everyone, and not just with UPC, because they paid the bill. So it's kind of like, either total transparency for everyone, or else you pay for it, and it belongs to the city council. I guess it's kind of how I feel, because if UPC pays the bill, then they get to review it, and they get to review the invoice at a level that maybe you don't want to share, but now you're compelled to, because they paid the bill. Okay? So there again, that's part of the devil's dilemma. What do you do? What's it really worth to the city of Brisbane, and the people of Brisbane, to do it with the highest level of ethics and integrity? So, and I, I totally appreciate where you guys are coming from, and it's nothing about this firm, or that firm, or whatever. They look as honorable and as good at their job as any other one that I've ever known or looked at. Okay? That's not the question at hand. The question is, what is the actual purpose of the survey, and how will the information be used and characterized? So, and I do trust you. I, I do. I, I voted for every one of you. So I have to trust you. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Dana. I heard the lady mention having objective instruments, and I'm like, that would be wonderful if that were true. I didn't hear what Michelle had said, but what I initially, because I was out in the hallway, but I'm concerned about the backloaded questionnaire, similar to the ones the city has sent out before. And even the card that went out to the community a while back, which you're now calling the Community Prepared Plan, it never once mentioned densities or amount of square footage that our, have your say day was going to create. Frankly, when the environmental consultants came in, and they said that even the Community Prepared Plan exceeded a lot, what's allowed in our general plan, I'm like, I don't think that's true, because every single council, I mean, I don't believe that the council members knew that the Community Prepared, or Community Evolved Plan exceeded what was in our general plan. Because you guys get up there, you swear you're going to uphold the constitution of the government, the constitution of the state, and the laws of the town, and yet you voted something that was illegal in Brisbane, that exceeded the allowances in our general plan. And I'm only thinking there are two of the current council members that had voted on that plan. So I know that there are two that hadn't. But I was, I'm trying to gather my thoughts to say them in a proper way, but I was floored when that was presented to the community, that any of the things being considered right now exceed what we so diligently worked on for three years in a row, to create a general plan that is lovely, although I tried to point out the problems with having accepted that many years ago, because I did try to vote down the general plan, but forces were different at that time. But back to the discussion of backloaded questionnaires. I would like to participate in doing the backloaded questionnaire. And I would like the questions of, if you knew that DTSC would allow importing toxic-laden soils onto the property at a, a use higher than residential, would you still allow residential use out there? If you knew that, once you were living in a house, that DTSC would declare that they have no more oversight to deal with getting you new housing, would you allow housing out on the Baylands to be only regulated by the so-called Responsible Agency? If you knew that there are data gaps that could potentially put people at risk to explosion, to exposure to toxic chemicals, would you think that this is a safe place? Let me be part of the questionnaire, instead of, where do you want to put it? Because where do you want to put it, which was the have-your-say-day experiences that we've been through 20 years in a row, anyway, 20 years later? Just, these surveys do not do any more than to serve, in my opinion, what is already a predetermined outcome. And I always tell my friends not to turn them in. You've never, the city of Brisbane's never gotten a survey from my family. I will make my opinions known here, but not on a backloaded questionnaire. Thank you.
Things that need to be addressed. You know, I, I definitely hear, you know, your concerns, and when we were having our subcommittee meetings, we were thinking about you guys. Seriously. You know, because...
Well, don't overreact, sir.
No. You know, because you're going to ask the tough questions, and you're going to, you know, really, you know, put our feet to the fire, to make sure that the information that, that eventually comes from the survey is the will of the people. And so we haven't had a single meeting where UPC has attended. And they, they have not attended any of those meetings. They will pay for the survey, just like they pay for the consultant for the Sustainability Committee. But it's a conflict of interest if, if, if information is withheld. You, you know, our, our intent is to make the information available to the public as transparent as possible. And, and the first thing that you do is, you incorporate the community to help structure, you know, the information that, that is going to be needed, and then, and then helping with us with the, with those questions. I mean, eventually, the only way to understand what the community wants is, is to do a survey. Not everybody's going to come to a meeting. Not everybody's going to watch on TV. The people are busy with their lives, they have other things going on. Some people get intimidated coming to these meetings. And so we have to provide a venue, a means of being able to communicate what they want to see out of the Baylands. It's so important. And so, you know, I mean, like Ray said, you, you're going to have to trust this council working with staff, that we are doing the best that we can, and that we are representing the city in, in a normal way. And so I'm looking forward to engaging, you know, the council and the community with that survey. Because eventually, it'll, it'll provide the direction that, that we need.
Well, still seems to be confusions about specific plans, that, you know, one of those plans are going to be adopted, it seems to me, because they are absolutely not going to be adopted. And the purpose was to study broad scope, any and all, except for a few things. And so, and people keep saying, oh, the Community Approved Plan, that that's going to be adopted, A, item A, B, C, or D. No, it's not. It's just, it is not. It's, it's not what it's going to be. And it's just going to be things within those specific plans, or what the EIR is built around. And I know we said it numerous times, but I think many people aren't hearing that we're going to adopt one of those specific plans, and they are not. It's just a study.
That's right. Those plans describe certain uses, and those uses then are studied in the EIR. And so, eventually, yeah, well... So, eventually, yeah, well, the planning process is still a ways away. And that's when things will get, I think, are interesting for the town. Because then we'll have the data from the EIR to show, you know, what we can and what we can't do. And if you want to do something, then this is what you're going to have to do.
Terry?
John?
William?
I've listened to everybody talk about the surveys, and I happened to take two this week that were phone surveys. And definitely had slant to them. They were slanted to get a response. And to, they were not objective at all. And I thought they were pretty humorous to throw them off base, because they certainly had thought they had gotten a completely different person than they had with me in answering those questions. But I think that the best way to get information is to talk to people and to really get a feel for what people want. And I agree that I have almost never had a survey taken that gave you the options for what you wanted to say in a logical way. And several of them that I'd gotten here in Brisbane said they were anonymous, but had tracking numbers on them. Which instantly you think, well, there's a reason they're tracking that data. So, I think that you guys have really researched the firm and the process so that we can get the best questions we can. But we had an informal survey out at our club, and, you know, what's important to you? Is new carpet important, or is this? How important are the bathrooms on one to 10? If those had come back as a one, are we taking out the bathrooms? So, how are you, you know, how you look at your results are everything. Because obviously, we're not taking out the bathrooms, because half the people said they weren't that important to them. Yes, I'm sure they are important to them. But again, if we're using this as a tool after the draft EIR and before the final EIR, if we get 50% of the people of Brisbane that say they want housing or they don't want housing, does that mean we're not going to look at it? Or does it just mean we're going to take it into consideration that people want it or don't want it? So that's another thing to look at, where we're going to come up with a use for this information. And again, the asking questions on, you know, if you were to put a hospital, where would you put it? And is a hospital important? You know, that kind of question is really going to have to be looked at for how it's, what response you're really trying to get and how true those results are. It's a difficult question. And as far as sharing the results, I think that if UPC is paying for it, of course, we have to show the data. And that's one of the issues we had when we did the hotel survey, was who's going to own the data? And who's going to be able to extrapolate the needed information from it? And it does bring up a concern. And if we, if we do do this survey and come up with, you know, the wants and don't-wants of the community, is that going to give us a better project? If we give that to the developer and say, "Okay, well, here you go, you've got it in writing, what our peoples want." And is that going to change? Or is that going to be with a little footnote saying, "They may want it, but we may not," or "We may not be able to plan for it?" So, it's a tough decision, but I think we need to get the information. I'm just not sure how we're going to get that in a logical way and from every person or every household. I mean, I know my husband and I don't think of the same on certain items. Who gets to answer the survey?
Yeah, well, yeah, it goes to every registered voter, so that's the idea. So that, that was one of the interesting questions. When we were looking at the difference between doing a mail survey and an interview survey, where you actually go to homes. And one of the problems with the interview survey, when you go to home, is that, you know, the dominant person of the household ends up giving the answers. Whereas with the mail survey, when you send it to, you know, registered individual voters, then hopefully there is that greater opportunity for individualities, which is therefore one of the reasons we decided to go in that direction.
Online, too.
And you can also do it online, right?
Right. That wasn't available last time.
Right. No, it didn't even exist last time, yeah. The other thing that I think, we really haven't fully fleshed out how we're going to do the planning process.
Yes.
I mean, that's something we need to talk about, for sure. The survey, in my mind, provides information that we need as we begin, I'm not talking about we, the community with the council and leadership, you know, planning what we want out there. And as Clark was saying, that it's not the developer ultimately that's going to say what goes out there, it's us. We don't really tell them, "You've got to do this or that and the other," in terms of their plan. We will do the, we'll set the parameters. And those parameters come from what the public tells us they'd like us to do, at least in my mind, anyway. And the particular plan and configuration that comes out of that process, I mean, nobody at this point has a clue as to what that's going to be. And that's why we have to wait till we actually certify the final FEIR, because we might come up with something that is a combination that is so different from anything that's individually studied than EIR. That, you know, they may need to do additional studies even. And we can do that. I mean, as far as I understand it, that's within our purview, and that's what we will need to do. And that'll be a very complicated and probably very extensive process. And one of the things that I discovered at an ABAG meeting is that now you can, again, talking about things that you can do now that you didn't used to be able to do, is you can actually do all sorts of computer simulations now of, well, all kinds of various things and various alternatives and various trade-offs and things. You can actually now deal with a lot of complex variables, you know, through computer modeling, which is something that just didn't exist before. So that should really help the planning process. But at this point, we really haven't decided, you know, where that starts, how we involve the planning commission, you know, in the traditional way, it would go there first and then come here. Well, we might not want to do that this way. We might want to, you know, combine the processes, because we might really want to be, you know, leadership of, you know, what are the kinds of things that we need to have in whatever plan we feel that's appropriate to approve with a lot of conditions. And then we have to, you know, negotiate that with the developer, and then we've got to come up with something that we're comfortable with, the community's comfortable with, to put eventually, you know, on the ballot. And so that's a long, complicated process, and we really haven't figured out all the steps that are involved there. But to me, the first step obviously is, you know, the EIR. And the second step is, okay, so what is the community comfortable with in terms of all the trade-offs that have been discussed? And then third of all, okay, so how do we go about putting all this together in a plan that makes sense for all concerned?
Yeah, well, you know, just thinking of our next meeting, next subcommittee meeting, I mean, I'm taking the input from you guys, taking the input from you. And you're right, you know, how do we, how do we, how do we plan putting together that survey so that the community does not feel, you know, that it's, you know, getting blindsided by questions that aren't appropriate or, you know, are misleading? I mean, there's, you know, and when that, when the final results come out, you know, it's going to be from this community, and the data is going to be available to everybody and not just to some. And it isn't going to be, you know, cherry picked, it's just going to be everything. I mean, this is coming from us. I mean, I just want folks to know that, you know, it is probably be the most thorough and legitimate survey ever conducted, you know? But that's how our town is. So, yeah.
Can we have the city manager explain maybe on the, just because UPC's paying for it, do they have exclusive rights to anything on this?
No. I mean, the way this works, and I understand that this, you know, there's a perception issue, and then what I'm going to try to describe is just kind of administratively how we handle these things. So, we bring these contracts forward to the city council. The city council approves it, and then it's a contract between the city of Brisbane and in this case FM3 Group. It's our work product. It's our business relationship between the city and the private consultant contractor. The only place UPC, in this case, comes into contact with this is on a monthly basis when Stewart's Shop sends out the bill to UPC for the various charges. And they pay the bill. They have no, you know, access that beyond, you know, just what public access is. For example, the hotel study's going to come back on August 19th and be presented, and there'll be a full report. And that will be available to the, to anybody who wants to look at it. Obviously being presented to the city council, but UPC, anybody will be able to, you know, to take a look at the findings. So that's kind of the way we, you know, that's the way we handle it. I was trying to think through my mind, is there any difference in the way things would be handled if the city paid for it versus, you know, another party? And the answer is no. I mean, we would handle it exactly the same way. So it just really comes down to perhaps a public appearance perspective, and I understand that. My other kind of hat is the, you know, the city's budget and finances. And so, we have always been very aggressive in terms of trying to get reimbursements for various things that we do. That's been kind of the strategy for the time that I've been here.
OPM. Other people's money.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, the same is true with the EIR itself, because UPC's paying for the EIR, right?
It's part of the reimbursals.
It's a reimbursement agreement, so.
Then if that was the case, we would be studying all of the alternatives instead of just the ones of the program.
So, yeah, further conversation on moving ahead with the contract?
I'm going to make a motion.
I'll second it.
To approve the attached proposal from FM3 Consulting Services, Fairbanks, Maslin, Metz, and Associates for a budget up to $64,500.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. We'll do our best.
Could we take a little break, Mr. Mayor?
I think that's probably a good idea.
We're going to have to extend the meeting then.
Yeah, well, it's quarter after 10, right?
We're not going to get through this.
I extend it before we come back.
Let's extend the meeting till 11:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We'll take two longer breaks now.